Or just relax. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Buck.
Mr. Jimon Angela?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Caldwell Craigner?
Here.
Mr. Sephora?
Here.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Here.
Ms. Beazey?
Here.
Mayor Walker?
Here.
All present.
At this time, may I have approval of the minutes for the June 8, 2015 meeting, please?
I move the minutes of the June 8, 2015 meeting be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
May I have a second, please?
I second the motion.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. May I have approval of the fiscal department reports and the paid bills for the month of June?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion?
I have a question from Ms. Buck. Is any of the bills that we're paying outside the scope of the budget?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we will have the citizens' requests with items that are related to the agenda only at this time, please. We'll have some time at the end of the meeting for an open discussion from the residents. So if you have anything you'd like to discuss, please go to the microphones, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three to five minutes.
James Miller, 127 East Fort Avenue, Latrobe. I only have one item on the related to the agenda. You have, under Public Works, it's the third one, item B3, Public, the Public Works Department, on the direction signs. Is that related in any way to the Ligonier and Main Street area?
Yes. Yes, it is.
I have a suggestion that you may want to consider. I think that pole's been knocked down three or four times at least by trucks making that a right-hand turn. I would strongly suggest that you approve any right turns there by big trucks. Also, it may be a good idea to have a camera installed that will cover that area if you're not going to approve something like that, because I would assume that our insurance company probably has to pay for the damage to those, to that pole unless PennDOT covers, which they probably don't. But I would assume that our insurance company through the city covers any damages. And of course, the more damages we have and the more claims we have, the higher cost it is going to be for our insurance policies. So I would hope that the council would consider passing some type of ordinance certainly, and also putting a camera in that area to catch these trucks that are doing that, if not. Their insurance company doesn't cover.
What we're looking at, Jim, is changing the truck roll so that it doesn't go there.
Thank you.
And that's the plan, is that we have, we make them turn somewhere else.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions related to the items on the agenda? Committee reports, finance, Mike Madlin, anything?
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Public safety, Julie, Jerry, anything?
Not really. We're taking the summer off for the neighborhood watch. It will resume in September.
Personnel committee, Church Mike?
I know that we're in the initial stages with the FOV contract right now, so FOB negotiations for the contract.
Which expires the end of this year.
End of this year it expires.
Public Works, Julie, Madlin, anything?
No.
No.
Summer's a quiet time. Community Development, Julie, Trish, or Fabian, anything?
Nothing.
Board and Authority reports, do we have anything? I don't see anybody here. Department reports, Joe?
I'll be brief. This morning, City Manager and Gibson Thomas and I, we opened up bids for the CDBG paving project, which is Levine Street, and we also opened up bids for the city's paving project. The bids right now are at Gibson Thomas' office. They're being reviewed for any mistakes and making sure that they meet all our criteria before the bid is awarded. And the only other item I have is we're falling a little bit behind on some of our work. Please be patient with us, as everybody else. The rain is just really, really putting a hurt on us. Line painting, patching, auto fix and paving. We're doing the best we can, but bear with us. It's certainly been a rainy six weeks. Thank you.
At least it's not snow and we're not out of salt, so.
Not yet.
Let's see. Ben Moore's not here, Rosalie's not here, Anne's not here. Okay. Kelly, you're up.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the first item is under the Police Department. It is a motion, and it reads, "I move we authorize the solicitor to prepare and advertise an ordinance amending Chapter 256 to delete prohibitive parking on the south side of Grant Street, add permit parking on both sides of Grant Street from Anderson Street to East Harrison Avenue, and to increase the fine for violation of permit parking from $15 to $30." Actually, we did increase that fine before. I just noticed that in speaking with Barbara. But there's one part of the statute or the ordinance, we didn't catch that number, and so we had to change that to make it consistent. But the motion is basically to get the ordinance prepared and advertised.
And can you, can you kind of explain why, why I brought this up?
Why? There is a non-conforming business use on the property that basically, as I understand, it repairs vehicles. And it use, that business uses the streets to park the vehicles that are a part of its business and taking away parking from people who reside there. I mean, this is no different years ago, we had the problem with the hospital, when all the employees would park right in front of the homes and people could not park their vehicles. So the intention would be to distribute two permits to each property, residential and/or business. And that's all the number of vehicles they can park on the street without potentially being fined. That's the purpose of this, to distribute parking really between and among all the people there.
So could I have a motion to authorize the solicitor to prepare and advertise this ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, is a resolution, and it's entitled, "着法的贡献" to Westmoreland Clean Waste for hazardous, household hazardous waste sponsorship. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that the Council of the City of Latrobe hereby authorizes and approves a contribution to Westmoreland Clean Waste for the year 2015 in the amount of $600 in Section 2, that the mayor, city manager, and the city secretary be entered here by authorization directed to take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second? Any questions or discussion?
Ms. Buck? This is Resolution 2015-22. Mrs. Caldwell Craigner?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Sephora?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angela?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Those seven, yes.
The next item appearing under Public Works is a resolution, and it reads, "Approving winter traffic service agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation." Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that the City of Latrobe does hereby approve the winter traffic service agreement in substantially the form attached as Exhibit A for the removal of snow by the City of Latrobe on designated state routes located within the city for such payment as set forth in the agreement and is herein after established by the Department of Transportation. In Section 2, authorizes the mayor, secretary, and any other proper city officer to sign the agreement on behalf of the city and take any and all other action necessary. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
So will I.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion?
Ms. Buck? This is Resolution 2015-23. Mr. Jimon Angela?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Craigner?
Yes.
Mr. Sephora?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Those seven, yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item is a simple motion, and it's under the Public Works Department. It reads, "I move we authorize the solicitor to prepare and advertise an ordinance to restrict usage by trucks with a gross motor vehicle weight in excess of 26,000 pounds on Ligonier Street from the northerly side of Gertrude Street and Ligonier Street on the south to the southerly side of the intersection of Main Street and Ligonier Street on the north." So, simple motion.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Manta? May I have a motion, please? Mike made that motion. Is there a second?
I'll say.
I'm sorry, I was reading. Any questions or discussions? Ms. Buck?
Oh, your motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The last item appearing under the Department's Public Works Department is a resolution authorizing the temporary closing of Bank Lane from Water Street to Jefferson Street on a temporary basis, whereas the Westmoreland County Community College is completing its facility located on Depot Street in the City of Latrobe. Whereas during construction of Bank Lane, which borders the rear of the community college property, was closed to vehicular and pedestrian traffic. Whereas it is the desire of council, the Bank Lane remain closed on a temporary basis in order to further review various safety issues associated with reopening Bank Lane for vehicular and pedestrian traffic. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, council of the City of Latrobe does hereby direct the city manager or his designee to close Bank Lane to vehicular and/or pedestrian traffic by the placing of a concrete jersey barrier at one or both ends of Bank Lane, i.e. at the terminus with Water Street and/or the terminus at Jefferson Street. The closings shall continue until further directed by council. In Section 2, the mayor, city manager, or his designee, as well as any other proper city officer, are authorized and directed to take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined?
I'll make a motion.
May I have a second? Jerry made the motion, Julie seconded. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Deglow, has he questioned that yet? Does it affect his business at all? Maybe I go talk to him or something.
No, we haven't actually. I think actually the people, the employees, have gotten run over. What people want to do. No, I haven't talked to him.
He hasn't had none of his employees ran over, you know?
No, I'm just saying, it would be, to me it seems to be a safety issue, but certainly can talk to him. He's not complained or just been closed for quite a long time.
Who's going to conduct this safety survey or safety?
I think what we decided at the agenda meeting was that we wanted to wait until the college got in there and saw the traffic, pedestrian traffic, and so I wouldn't say that, there's certainly no survey. We were just going to evaluate based on pedestrian traffic and inconvenience and talking to, yeah. We've been closed for two years, probably.
Yeah, and I thought the reason they closed them was to, because of all the heavy equipment over there and stuff like that. So there was no problems there, especially with the college done.
There's also issues, I believe, with actual who owns the road, right? Aren't there some issues with Norfolk Southern, potentially?
Potentially.
Who does, who do they say owns it?
They own half, and we own half. That's their claim, but then they owe us a lot of, well, that, I don't know. I mean, there's, there's just some issues that, and our thoughts were, let's just, let's wait till the college gets moving and see what the, you know, the pedestrian traffic is there and see if it's really an issue if it stays closed.
But who's going to monitor that? That's not.
We are. The city manager, and Joe, and chief of police, and we'll bring it up again at a council meeting in six months or so, and we'll talk about whether we, you know, what we're hearing from the community. I've heard, I've had, I've heard nothing. I've had no complaints from anyone about it being closed.
And remember, we've talked to one of the staff reps that was on the transportation committee to look into ownership, to look in the ownership issue.
I have a question. If it's not open to traffic coming out of First Ward, coming back into First Ward as it usually was, how would you know, if you're going to keep the road closed, if it's going to be a safety issue with anyone? That place has been used for years and years and years, and I have yet to see an accident coming in or out of that road.
But we, we haven't had the kind of facility on that corner that we're now going to have. There should, there, we anticipate that there will be a lot more traffic, foot traffic, cars, because of the college. So I think we just need to evaluate it based on the, you know, the number of cars that are going to be parking in that parking lot. We never had that, you know, that, that block was a couple private homes, a couple small businesses, and some empty buildings. I mean, that block had no traffic on it, pedestrian or otherwise. Now it will, and I think we have to be aware of it.
Is there entrances there in the back alley? I can see my exits are entrances.
Yeah, there is, actually. Yeah, I was over there on Wednesday, and we went in one of those entrances on the alley side.
There were.
Wayne?
I'm not sure. I, I'm.
Remember when we met, when we met there?
Yeah, you, there is one, one of those.
Where is the parking lot?
Right, right. I'm not sure if the parking lot actually is on the Bank Lane or not.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's not a, I can see that.
I couldn't take it sure.
Yeah. The foot traffic, though, for that, like, there's not, I don't think there's going to be that many coming from First Ward blocking that way. I would think they would be coming hopefully from this way from town, partly.
Nice to see close for you, Matt.
Again, I don't, I don't see any harm in waiting six months and seeing what happens when the college gets in full swing, and that's, that's my recommendation, so. And that's what we talked about at the Agenda Room meeting. I thought we were all in agreement on who was here, anyway.
Madam Mayor, if I'm not wrong, and I was asking Wayne, there is an entrance right there off of Jefferson, and I think that would be one area that needs to be watched, because if you have a car coming up Bank Lane and a car cutting left, right there as you turn Jefferson, make a corner, and you're coming in behind the building, you'd have cars coming in two different directions about to spark a party. I mean, that's something.
I know Paxton's Garage used to have an entrance there, and Borden's Ice Cream, which I love, is, and don't remember accidents there.
There has not, there is not nearly the traffic at Borden's, nor at Paxton's Garage, as we anticipate there would be here, at least as I would anticipate, with five or 600 students in that, in that building. But all I'm saying is, it's been closed for two years. Let's, let's see what happens when, when the school gets moving and there is traffic and pedestrian traffic and, what, Jim?
May I? You know.
You're out of order, but I like that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any car coming from the brewery area to that light at Jefferson and Depot Street trying to make a right-hand turn, if there's a truck turning right from the brewery, you've got a nine-second light there. And by the time the truck makes the right-hand turn there and swings wide, you've got cars backed up. In several periods during, during the day, I've gone down and I've checked it. And you've got nine seconds to get through that light coming from the brewery, and you can, you're just backing up cars. If you keep that lane open like we, like I thought they had talked about opening, then a week later it's closed. I mean, I can't, I can't see it, and I'm sorry, and I apologize for not, for going out of order.
Well, don't forget, we have another issue coming up, too, and that's going to be the closing, the bridge, the renovation of the bridge over the creek. So we, you know, that, again, that's not till, till next year, but still.
Possibly next year, at least.
Well.
Yeah.
They keep, yeah, I mean.
We haven't set a timetable on yet, but I think it is prudent to observe once class is in session and students are there, to see what the foot traffic and the vehicle traffic is before we make a decision to open up and have to close it down or do some other kind of directional containing, containing there, so.
They're having a grand opening on September 17, so they'll be starting classes here very shortly. And I know they said that before, but they're supposed to be starting classes here in the fall, so we have a pretty good idea of that.
Wayne, in response to Jim's thing, you can always adapt life to life, like.
You can change the timing. That's PennDOT, right?
So, I mean, that's.
You could certainly, you could certainly discuss with PennDOT, you know, changing the timing.
If, if there was a need, but that's one thing else to look at, you know, and Wayne helps.
Mr. Knowers says, says about nine seconds, and this is, brewery traffic's been here for years and years and years, and we haven't yet talked to PennDOT about adjusting that light.
Well, there wasn't as many people at the agenda meeting, but I, and I did say this, and I, and I still believe it. You have that entry from Jefferson, and you can go from Jefferson Street, go around the college, and go out onto Depot Street, and if that road is closed, that is what people are going to do. I don't know how you'd ever stop it, unless you have somebody out there, or you put a gate up where people have to put money in to get through, to get in and out of.
We put the, there's a, there's a cement barrier there.
No.
Oh, through the college parking lot you're talking about?
We're going to go right through.
Well, there's going to be cars in there.
There's still, there's a doorway there through there.
They're not using it now. I mean, if it, if it opened now, everybody would, I would do it. I would just take that.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Officer Colombo, are you allowed to come through gas stations and park lots like at the Vito Light or anything like that?
No.
Thank you.
Well, you know, there's going to be sitting down there watching, too. All right, well, any other comments, questions, we'll just vote and see where it lands. Is this a resolution?
Resolution.
Okay. Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2015-24. Mr. Sephora?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angela?
No.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mrs. Caldwell Craigner?
No.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Those four, yes, three, no.
Madlin, I grew up down there. I get down there, I'm down there every single day. I have grown, I'm there every day. I'm at least there once a day. And I just don't think it's that big of a deal. I just want to see, I just want to see what happens with college, that's all. I'm not saying we're not going to open it.
I don't think anyone's going to monitor that. I don't think Wayne's going to sit down there. The police.
No one's going to do that, Trisha, but we're going to get feedback from the community and from the college. We are, we. We are. We're going to get feedback from the, we're going to ask the college, and we're going to look at what the foot traffic is. Joe, the police, they'll see what kind of traffic is going through down there. I mean, we're here every day running around seeing what's going on, so we'll, we'll be able to make a better determination after, after there's activity there. So, okay. Any unfinished business?
I have one. What's the status on the bathrooms at Legion Keener, staying open later? Kiddos have the baseball games. I'm down there with my kids at the park. Kids, boys, girls, everyone, they're peeing everywhere. Like, you have to run home. I ran home twice. Now I'm at a baseball game. I'm not just saying this for me. I see kids everywhere peeing.
Is it Legion Keener, is the ballpark open?
I see it. All the different ones. The bathrooms are locked at 3:00. So now we have kids, I mean, I have boys, they're peeing everywhere.
We allow the restrooms at 3:00 in the parks up until dusk.
Yeah.
So there's.
We'll have to take it up.
Hundreds and hundreds of people walking, running, baseball games, and we don't have facilities.
Yeah, that's controlled by the Parking Rec Commission, not the city.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah, so we have to, we'll have to bring it up at the next commission meeting, which isn't till August, but I can talk to Jeannie before that. But we don't, the city doesn't control that, but we can, you can call the Parking Rec. Anybody can pick up the phone and call them.
Who owns the, the ground, who owns the fields?
The foundation owns Legion Keener. The foundation owns.
And the city. It was out from Legion to the city in 1936 for $8.
Right, but.
And the foundation helps.
They're the legal owner. The foundation is the legal owner.
In Legion Keener, that's.
Yes.
City owns.
We own the athletic field.
Athletic field. And?
And First Ward.
So they'll part the park down there to.
That's all Legion Keener.
City?
Yeah, they're.
The Parking Rec Commission.
Runs.
They operates the mall regardless of ownership.
Yeah.
The school district owns Third Ward up on the hill. We own athletic fields and First Ward. Foundation owns Legion Keener.
The problem is, they're, the problem, quite frankly, is vandalism. That's part of the reason why they're, they're locked.
Is that when their employees see us working?
At 3:00, yeah.
Garden parks, bathrooms are open.
I don't know.
They have key vaults and soccer.
They should be open till dusk at Legion Keener. There's no question about that. They should be open, they should at least be open till the park closes. But again, I mean, any resident that, did you call them, Parking Rec, and ask them? And did anyone answer you?
They're down at 3:00.
They were looking for someone to, to take it upon themselves, close the bathrooms and help with the fields every now and then, or a small stipend and some free passes, but I guess nobody.
Yeah, they just, they don't have the manpower.
You know, years ago, it seemed like if you had a team, an organized team of something, if you could get a key during the time, if your team was playing, open a door, lock it back up when you left, and we could look at that kind of.
And maybe, you know, volunteer. So if people want to volunteer, volunteer to be the bathroom locker. No, you'd have to, you'd have to say, Trisha, Trisha Caldwell has a key, or, you know.
Sign the key out. I mean, yeah, somebody else will get the locker. There could be a problem, a question.
But you're not, you, I would think if you give them to people, you wouldn't give out 25 keys. You'd give out.
The coaches.
The coaches would have a key and they would have a sign for it and be responsible for it.
I know, one time, we used to, we had the old junior high school there play basketball on Sunday, and January cannot open up. We'd play and everything else, and people would come back and I'd close it. Then it would be, what's always happens, everything you do, is insurance starts stepping in, they start putting a stop there. But you're probably seeing the recreation, you check, not law state, the recreation, you'll probably see that. That's going to be one of the reasons, and I can understand that. That's gonna be one of the reasons, and I can understand that.
The liability factor.
That's right.
But then, too, if there's no baseball game, then it's, you know, it's closed. There's not baseball games every night. So that wouldn't, I guess, I guess they have to solve it.
Yeah, 'cause it's really hard to even more, because Little League has their own individual structure, and they do.
Oh, yeah, but, but Legion Keener fields don't.
Right.
Yeah.
Little League, Little League, they branch out and use all the fields.
The minors.
And they use first ward too. I mean, they've got a thing to do soccer and stuff, so I'm not sure.
I'm sure this-
It's like being a volunteer and stuff like that, 'cause like, like Rosie said, because, uh, not the first ward, we, we'll open up our building to them, we usually give the guy a key down there, I could, like I said, and to the governor.
Any new business? Okay, at this time, we have our open forum for citizens' requests, if anybody from, um, any of the citizens would like to talk about anything that's on their mind, please feel free to step to the microphone, take your name and address, and please limit your comments at three to five minutes.
Jimbo, 225 Irving Avenue. Not to kick a dead horse if you just went through about that street over there. I'd like to have my son's car serviced by Allenell Cleveland. It's on a personal basis. When I leave there, years, years ago, before we had this so-called school, I can block that alley and get on Jefferson Street without any problem. Today, try crossing Depot Street and looking for that oncoming traffic coming across the bridge, as far as I'm concerned, it's dangerous. I like to patronize my own businesses here in town. You're talking their throats, or you're hurting them, not giving them that access. You're doing a lot of planning about this school. How many of you'd be disappointed if it doesn't open?
It's open.
That college is in trouble. Raise its tuition, decrease in enrollment, and they're going to the county commissioners for more money. If you get it booked, you may dodge them holidays unless you want a county without going broke. As I said, that's just a personal feeling of mine, that's a much safer way for me to get out of Allenell Cleveland was block that street under Jefferson Street. I've never had a bit of problem until, there again, when you block that off for this construction, I felt, here's another giveaway. Whether it's all said and done, you have the citizens satisfied, now we can close that street or alley, we'll give it to the college for official parking or something. They're getting going back to the college, they don't pay no taxes, Allenell Cleveland pays taxes there in the truth. When that college opens, I doubt very much whether you'll see more of the four-year-old automobiles in their parking lot, if you see that. Like I said, I think they have a problem. One other thing I'm calling in the minority, I don't disagree, I disagree with what's going on, is you're licking Avenue Trail, I love that. I've looked at that numerous times, across the street there, the thing, when it was built, it was called sidewalks. Now, you're gonna take it and put this ten-foot-wide blacktop highway straight up to the middle of town. I just wonder what some of the neighbors have to say about it, the ones in Jerry Tonti didn't want to acquire it real quick. Now they're saying six hundred thousand. I will bet anybody fifty dollars right now, they can't build that for fifty thousand, or six hundred thousand dollars, that's gonna go to a million at least. You're gonna have over a hundred thousand dollars to give some tons just for the engineering. They'll have to go to Ohio and get their contractor to put the imitation brick sidewalks across Main, Wells, Spring, Fairmont, James. Degrading and everything else, like I said, when you spend this kind of money, it's supposed to benefit the majority of taxpayers, not a couple that may walk on it, which I doubt. Once again, they're gonna be coming back to council, I know, word's all over, they're gonna want some more money because they even won't have enough to finish that. Six hundred thousand, never make it. And a parting shot, I have yet, in five years since I've been able to come back and attend these meetings, seen or heard an audit of the Parker Recreation Authority. Where's the money going? Who's handling the money?
They have an audit done every year, Mr. Bolton, and it's public record, and if you'd like to see it, I'm sure I could get a copy of it for you.
I would love to see it.
Well, you can call them yourself and ask for a copy, 'cause it's a matter of public record, they're audited every year just like everybody else.
That'd be great, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Jeffrey Miller, 416 Fairmont Street. Good evening, council. One year ago today, I was at a council meeting talking about thirty-two hundred bucks worth of personal items I lost in my basement due to a rat infestation. What's going on? The house behind me, again, the gentleman just dumped his nose at city council. The house is now falling in on itself, I've visibly seen rats crawling through the camper, the car, the boat. My neighbors have seen rats, they have rats, and the city has done nothing. I had a hole next to my garage, dug underneath my garage. I called the city and said, hey guys, this is near the drains or something, can somebody take a look? The water authority replied, camera's broke, nothing there. They're supposed to pump in about fifteen, twenty yards of cement down that hole, and we'll find out what's there. But I just filled it up with grass and filled, nothing's crawled out. After I poisoned it, I found about a twenty-pound possum up on Lincoln Avenue. There's a rodent issue going on. We have to band together to keep the area clean. I'm constantly cleaning my garbage, I'm taking care of business, making sure my area's clean, but the guy behind me does it. And if the city can't do anything about it, we got problems.
Wayne, you know what's wrong?
Uh, the house is, this big man bank is looking into it, I know she's, it's in the process, I, I don't know where it is right now.
Sir, behind that, down the other street, 416 Walnut, 415 Walnut, 415-
I'm, I'm not sure about that, it's my-
That was, that was inhabited.
Back window, and I don't know-
Someone lives in this one you're talking about?
I don't know how.
Right?
Yes, we don't know how.
I'll talk to Ann about it, I'm, I'm up to date on it.
We need to do something quickly, it's been a year, we've done nothing, we have to do something about it.
I know she bates.
What's that?
I know she bates, I know she bates quite frequently.
She bates.
She bates the rats.
Yeah, but that's, that's a short-term solution to a long-term problem.
I know, but I mean, that's, that's one of her tools, one of her toolbox.
The problem is, I'm not sure, Jim, whatever, you know, I mean, whatever our legal rights at this house is, we can't go in and condemn it.
Do we, do we even know where the source of the rats are? Is it the house, or is it the vehicle outside the house, or a garage, or what?
Sir?
Hi, my name's Ben Carlos, I'm 410 Fairmont Street. Uh, you know, I understand that people can come across hard times and, you know, maybe not have the money to do it, or maybe not have the manpower to do it, but we've actually collectively went to this man and said, I will, I will pay out of my pocket to get all this cleaned up. No.
Is there garbage out, all around the house? Is that what you-
You can't even see the yard, you don't even know what's in there, and there's metal in there, and I don't, my daughter's eight months old, I have a dog there, what happens when she gets bit by a rat? Who, who does with that? Because I've physically seen with my own eyes the rats.
Where are they coming from?
The house, they're, it's coming, I've seen it from-
Outside, you've seen them, like, getting out of there?
Yes, clearly, because, as these guys do, we like to take care of our, our neighborhood, you know, we're outside with our daughter, outside with our pets, and constantly, you know, I see something scurrying, and one time it's the cat, and then one time it's the cat chasing the rat.
We were on the back porch and saw one.
Right.
Again, coming through the house?
The garbage in their yard has a lot of the fluid on it.
Yes, it's just, I-
Well, there's gotta be some ordinance against garbage in the yards, that we, uh, we knew about this a year ago though. So, we have to do something with that garbage, I mean, we can write all the letters we can, and I understand our hands are tied with that, but surely, there's some kind of action we could fix.
Obviously, isn't there a public health issue here?
Right.
I would, there could be, there could be, I mean-
Anne sent the past, she's written lots of letters to these people, but nothing's come from the letters.
Yeah, we gotta get some teeth.
Well, you're right.
Here, we got teeth, we passed an ordinance to have teeth, and nobody's acting on those teeth. Just keep talking about it, and maybe your kid will get bit by a rat, or my kid will get bit by a rat, and we'll get somebody's attention.
I hear you, I hear you.
What's the difference, you, you people in Austin, who come from New York, the rats, who come from this basement?
Well, the difference, the difference is, if it's coming from the house, then that gives us the basis, uh, to get administrative warrant to go in the house.
So you saw these things coming from the house?
Yes, and I will go as far, I will go as far as, I will pay for cameras, I will pay for cameras on my house that looks directly in that yard.
We believe you, sir.
Yeah.
He was just getting, he, we just needed clarification.
So I thought that they were coming from vehicles, the cars-
No.
Which is a little different than coming out of the house, that's how I imagine.
And, and I think originally, we thought it was from, they were coming out of the abandoned, or they were, it was the abandoned house, so-
Right.
All we're trying to do is clarify.
Yeah, all angles. I'm on the sewer, the abandoned house, and the house behind me. He's got three vehicles in there that haven't been inspected in years. He had a vehicle on a registration plate on it for one day, got told, moved, fixed. Three years, I looked at a boat in the backyard.
And an RV.
And a Fiero, and a Pontiac.
And there's weeds growing through the vehicles now, so you can't even tell what type of model they are.
It's not-
Wait, I'm looking for Mr. Brummer about the inspections of the cars and stuff like that.
I can, I can take a look at it, I thought, I know there's been some action, Anne's not here to say what action, Jim's not here, I don't wanna speak for him.
And the boat, um-
I, I don't think-
There's nothing in our ordinance that-
Bring a boat on your yard.
That says there's anything illegal about storing a boat. Cars, yes, but not a boat.
They need to be inspected, but the boat doesn't come in that-
We have an ordinance that does say you cannot leave things out in your yard that are not outdoor things, they have to be stored in an enclosed-
Yeah.
Building of some sort. I mean, if it's a bird bath note, that's safe, but if it's a couch, that's not supposed to-
Is he on vacation?
Yeah, I have him on.
I think she's on vacation all week. So, I, we need some, I think, when she gets back next Monday, we need a report out on this, and we need to call this, this guy's back, and-
I'll, I'll get his phone.
Jim? Now, boats, you're saying they have to be stored in a building or something like that, not on the street?
I think they can be on the- I think they can be tarped.
They can be on the street as long as the, uh, trailer is inspected.
Can, can I approach him quickly with just a picture I took before he left? They don't even have tarp on them, there's nothing covering-
No, but they're not on the street, they're in their yard, the boat.
Wait, you can't really tell.
The boat doesn't have to be tarped.
The boat doesn't have to be tarped, we think, he's gonna go back and look at the ordinance.
Been there for six years, and-
Well, that's more so.
Well, that, yeah, that's- It's been a year.
I mean, this is, you can see that the windows are just broken, things are falling out of them.
The house is fire, that's true.
Correct. And we, and our testers, who live on the other side, said, we own the whole house, two doors down, we will give you that house if you move out.
Can I say that?
Yes, please.
I, I went to this guy, this is hilarious, the neighbor next to him, the older gentleman lived there at the Great Lakes, his son's on the house, he's a father, he's out cutting grass, this guy had a weed that went over his yard. I stood in my garage, watched this guy walk over the wheel, take it up, staple the weed to the side of your residence, walked out of the house.
Do we know?
He stapled it. The neighbor just looked at him a long way, said, what kind of crap are you doing? He stapled the weed to that.
I think they've been there for a-
Hey, Jim. Jim, I'm gonna-
I grew up on the-
Hold on, hold on, wait, 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 there's two conversations going on at one time, one at a time. Madeline?
What are we saying?
Well, I was gonna say, is there an ordinance that we could get together somehow and, and get these vehicles moved even out of the yards? Because there's so many people that are building these storage sheds now, and, and they run very reasonably, get them, when they wanna have a boat, they wanna go store it in a, in a enclosed place if they don't have a garage.
Isn't one of the things we, isn't one of the things we did on our ordinances though, where we haven't, where we haven't issues with people taking them from the yard, which was under Anne's control, and put them on the street, which, so just moving them back and forth, didn't we, aren't we closing that gap? Didn't we talk about that?
We're talking about, uh, making a requirement that if you have a car in the yard, it has to be covered or in an enclosure, not necessarily both of those cars, I believe. Yeah, yeah, I, I think that we were trying to get all vehicles that are going to be stored under at least a tarp, minimum under a tarp.
Are these vehicles even moving?
We've been there for six years, I've never seen one of them move. I've been there for twelve years.
Never moved, never tarped?
Yeah.
Our ordinance did require them to be.
Right.
And that's what we're saying now.
Which, I understand that, but it's the fact that, I mean, I guess it's more not saying we're not arguing the, the law on that, but the outlook of, you don't even use them, and they're sitting in your yard, and they've been there for twelve years, and we've offered to have them paid for, and I'll buy it from you and move it out myself, but not-
People offer this property.
What I think, what we wanna do is, is, is put some teeth into this, so that we keep, so that if there is a car there, they've gotta put it under tarp or in a building, so maybe that'll entice them to get rid of it. I mean, we can only work within the, the guidelines of our ordinances, and, and if our ordinance don't, if our ordinances aren't clear and don't have any teeth, then shame on us, let's fix that, change the ordinance, and that's what we were just talking about at the last meeting, changing the ordinance that if you are gonna store a car in your yard, that you have to either enclose it in a building or cover it with a tarp.
I'm more afraid of the rats than the cars.
The rats are the issue.
I think what the gentleman's saying is, the, the first focus ought to be, if there are rodents there, where, where are they living, where are they-
Yes.
Coming from, and let's deal with that problem.
Right.
From what I have heard this evening, it sounds as though that there would at least be probable cause, well, first, the first step would be to ask the property owners if we could come in and inspect to find out what the source of these rodents are, maybe there's something, something in the basement that could be correct. And if, if, if it's refused, and entrance is refused, then we have, I think, probable cause to seek an administrative warrant from the local district justice.
Is, is it, is he the owner of the house, or is he a renter, do you know?
Owner, as far as I know.
I think he's an owner, I think he's been there for half-
I've, I've physically seen him in the six years that we've been there, twice, it's, I mean, the best thing that I can relate this to, if you've ever seen the movie The Verbs with Tom Hanks, it's the quote that counts.
Jim, what about, I wanna say ten years, fifteen years ago, when Mr. Brummer was on council, I remember we changed that ordinance, that before, if they had inspected, they didn't have a plate, they were okay, they had a plate, no inspection, they were still okay. And I thought we had to have changed those, that, that boat, that, that was inspected, order plate on, had to get rid of it.
You're saying either the road rather than boat?
Yeah, you had to have it in boat, you had to have it in boat.
It, this week, this week, Mr. Kelly will look at the ordinances, Anne will be back This week, this week, Mr. Kelly will look at the ordinances, Anne will be back on Monday, and we will, okay, we will follow up with you.
I've heard that.
All right, well, I wanna see what Anne's done, I understand what you're saying, but, I wanna see what, what, if, what Anne has been doing with this one.
Well, Anne's trying, Anne's...
I know she is.
It has to be a collective, come from here, mayor, council, everybody get together and say, that guy's got a problem. You can find him all you want, but he's a bad kid. He's a bad kid, you know?
Understand.
You just beat him up and get the message over with.
Well, we have to work within the confines of the law, so...
Just don't kill him.
We have to work within the confines of the law, and so, um, please make this our number one priority for when Anne gets back.
I'll give you some information.
It's not Anne's problem, that's the whole field.
I wanna know where Anne is...
One week I go in and say, Anne, you're doing a wonderful job, the house across the street to the land bank. Good, it's, you're gonna start renovations in a month. What about the guy behind me? She doesn't wanna talk about it.
Well, then she should be going to Wayne and talking to Wayne about it, and then Wayne should be going to Kelly and seeing what we can do, so...
It's been a year.
Okay.
Excuse me, what was that address of that property?
415 Walnut.
415 Walnut is the one that's in town. The other ones could take care of it.
No, it's still...
It's, well, it's in the works...
But it's gonna get fixed.
With the land bank.
I am hopeful, I am hopeful.
Understand.
And it comes to a point where, and I understand you guys have to work in your confines, but I mean, at the same point, if you want us to get a lawyer to help this process, certainly we can, I'll hire one.
I appreciate that, but you shouldn't have to do that, and I promise you, we will get, we will get something figured out. It may be that our hands are tied, we need to change our ordinances and do all that stuff, which takes time, but hopefully that's not the case, yes, sir.
I appreciate that.
My name's Wayne Romo, I live at 412 Paramount Street, Benny and Jeff live on either side of me. This house is directly behind me from my upstairs window in my back, there's no window covering. On the left side of the house, I've noticed within the last month, I believe, the plaster in the ceiling and whatever was in the attic has fallen into that room. You can see just at the very top of the window and in front of the house some sunlight coming through. And I've seen, in the wintertime, birds flying up in, I mean, the house is deteriorating, and I'm waiting for it to fall in on itself, actually. And I did talk to Anne about that, she told me that they were trying to change an ordinance because it was occupied, they really couldn't do much, that they were trying to change it, that they thought that it was unsafe, and they could condemn it, they could bypass that and get into the home. That was last September. As far as the vehicles go, the motorhome that's in there, the shrubs that are between the property, his property and the neighbor's, have grown over the windshield in the front of the vehicle, you can't even tell what it is. So tarping those vehicles, I don't even think he can afford to buy tarp for foot over them anyways, to tell you the truth. So that's just, I just wanted to add more, there's more problems there than just the rats. I think the house probably should be condemned.
It sounds like it.
I can't believe he's still in it. I happened to go in front of the house the other day and saw the front door was open and he's living in there. I thought he moved out. I can't believe he's still living in the house.
Is he elderly?
No.
No.
No, he's probably, I would say, in his late forties, early fifties, somewhere in there. He won't come out and cut the grass, he sends a young, younger boy, I'm thinking it's his son, and they always let the grass grow knee-high. Instead of just coming out once a week and cutting it, they have to really fight, fight through the tall grass even to get it. Now they just cut it, but they won't cut it again till prior October.
Okay, I think we get the message.
Okay.
Hi there, J.J. Colmer is my name. I live at 617 Walnut Street in Latro. Years ago, I worked for West Mountain County, providing protective services for senior citizens all around the county. And I came across the State Department of Labor and Industry regarding a situation similar to what you're talking about on Walnut Street. I filed a complaint with the State Department of Labor and Industry about this house that used to be on Depot Street here, and it was the burrow then. And they had a similar situation, there were young people living around nearby, there were people in the house, it was in terrible shape, it was falling down, there was no utilities. And the Department of Labor and Industry had that house bulldozed in a month. So, contact the State Department of Labor and Industry, they regulate every building in the Commonwealth, and they'll take care of it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How come we don't know that?
Took a year to find out, didn't it?
I've been out there involved.
Do they hack utilities in the back house?
Yes.
That's what's scary, I'd like to see the wiring.
Stephen Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue, regarding the property next to my house at 127 East Fourth Avenue. The property I'm talking about is 125 East Fourth Avenue. I would appreciate if possibly the council members and maybe the police chief and Anne Powell and the fire chief go over and take a look at the, at the property, also the tree. We can, it now has grapevine growing on the power lines, it's leaning over with all the rain we've had, I can't believe this tree hasn't gone down. When the wind's blowing, I go out and sit on my front porch, just looking at the dirt at the bottom of the tree lifting up. It's a safety hazard, and I want the city council to know that it's a safety hazard, because if somebody gets hurt, there's gonna be problems, and there's gonna be legal problems, and I don't think we need that. This is all part of the entire plan that the city has to do. They've been talking for years, I agree, about changing the ordinances and updating ordinances, but we haven't, we haven't done it. Also, the, regarding the restrooms at the park, I know we're having our family reunion down at the park this coming Saturday, there's gonna be about a hundred people, it's a big pavilion, and I thought that those restrooms were gonna be open, you know, but I went down the other day and they were, they were closed, they were locked, and I don't know what, I don't know how you expect the people to pay a hundred fifty dollars, two hundred dollars to rent a pavilion.
I agree.
Okay, and then the kids can't even go to the bathroom. If nothing else, port a porta-john down there, just temporarily until they get their act together, because they need something. You could have a porta-john down there or something, and then they could just add that into the cost or something. You need something for these kids. I mean, or they're gonna be growing on the trees and on the ground, and that's an issue. Thank you very much for bringing it up.
And may I add, the Latro Park and Rec meetings are the third Thursday of every month at four thirty in the green room, they are open to the public, and...
We have a representative on council...
I'll bring it up, I will bring it up. I'm just telling you that, you know, there's no running one at their meetings hardly, but they do have a board that is accessible and open to hear people's complaints, but I certainly, as the representative, will bring it up.
When is their next meeting?
August, their July meeting is canceled because of vacations.
Will you bring it up, can you talk...
I'll call Jeannie tomorrow.
Okay.
Jim, you should give Jeannie a call.
You know what, a suggestion may be...
But it does, it does help.
A suggestion may be, you know, for reunions and things like this, when you have big crowds, possibly when they, when the, now I have to get down and pick up sporting goods that they supply free of charge, which is great, okay? And I have, I have to pick those up at noon on Friday. Possibly they could give a key to one of our groups or something like that...
Right, that's what's right.
That would be responsible to run over there with the kids to go to the bathroom, and then lock it back up. That's a, that's a possible way of getting out of it.
I agree. There's gotta be a solution, what?
There's gotta be a solution for our reunion, I know that.
Yeah, but I encourage you, you know, I mean, I'll bring it up, but it also has more weight when it comes from you folks, I mean, from the public, I mean, that's, because they're there to serve us, the public, and provide a service, so I will certainly call first thing tomorrow. I had a meeting this last night...
I'm sure that they've got problems with, you know, having to have a person there twenty-four hours a day and things like that, but there's always ways to do something when you have big crowds like that.
Right.
Can I say something?
You can say anything you want.
Well, I visited Germany in my military travels, I noticed the woods were clean. It was an odd thing, I was driving, I'd see areas clean, industry clean, sidewalks clean. Little old lady comes out and brushes her sidewalk and says, good, God is good, God is good, she's brushing her sidewalk, it's the nineteen eighties. Why are the woods clean, I ask myself? And I asked one guy, I said, look, there's no pollution here, it's clean, it's beautiful. He said, each town hires a guy that's retired from council or from city, and they hire him, they give him a small stipend, he gets free access to all the clubs and partying and all that, but his job is to maintain the park, just walk around, clean stuff up, report when public works has to come, have a key for the bathrooms, have a little gator rip around, make sure the law and order's going on, he's not doing anything and he's called the Helfield people. And he goes around and he does that for two years until the next guy retires. These guys are fighting each other to get that job, and that town is spotless.
Several months, several months ago, they had been looking for someone to do that.
People don't wanna volunteer or even work for a stipend anymore. I mean, that's unfortunate, it's hard to find volunteers to do that.
Nah, I'm leaving here and going to volunteer at my local fire department.
It's the same people though, volunteering, I'm sure you volunteer, I volunteer, a lot of these people here volunteer, but this town is a lot bigger than this room, and I see the same people at this council meeting pretty much every, every single week, the people that are interested. Same thing at the, at the neighborhood watch. Everybody's complaining about, you know, the problems that we have in the town and the drug problem, yet we have community neighborhood watch, and we, we have a hard time getting more than twenty-five people there. So, you read, you know, so...
Why couldn't you find the guy though? I mean, really, why can't you find the guy? Somebody knows somebody who's retired or just retired, sitting around the house, and say, look, we're gonna give you a thousand bucks a month, and we're gonna give you a pass to the Eagles, we're gonna give you a pass to all the clubs you wanna go to in the evening, we're gonna give you a nice gator, four-wheel drive, go have a blast.
Joe, Joe, you're retired, and that will be his job.
Yes, this guy does, they're happy, they just got off the workforce, they're in good shape, they're in good physical condition mentally, they're squared away, and they take care of the city, and you see him. He does, in fact, if you visit the community Helfield people, he'll take you where the best hunting is.
Why don't you head up the committee to find those retirees?
If I send one down here, you give him a thousand bucks a month.
Well, I don't know if we have that kinda money.
And I'm not gonna write a check I can't cash.
Yeah, well, that's true, I don't know.
Make awareness.
I mean, we do, we do, fortunately for us, we do have our fire police that are retired and do some things for us.
You take care of them?
We, they're paid.
Good.
Yeah, I don't think they're paid a thousand dollars a month, they're paid on an hourly rate based on what they do. And it's not a lot of money.
Are they waiting for that money or is it right there?
Oh, no, they get paid.
Every two weeks.
Rose, yes ma'am. That was one thing I wanted to talk to you about. Fire police, they are paid. I went down the first ward for their carnival. There was a car parked across, caddy corner across the handicapped. Fire policeman and another young lady, I don't know what she was, she was in Buick, they were standing over in front of the fire hall. A bunch of kids were over here behind a car, having a party, and I went over to the fire police guy, and he said, I can't do anything about that, you have to call the police. Why do I have to call the police?
No, they don't have no resting park.
They don't have any, they don't have any resting parks.
She's saying why does she have to call the police?
If he's being paid, he should make sure that those parking spaces are available.
He can't, he can't enforce, he can't enforce them.
He could have a cell phone, possibly call the police.
Yeah, he could have called the police if he had a cell phone.
He has a cell phone.
He did, later, after he was gone, the young lady came over and said, hey, this table's here, I'll...
Anybody else? Donnie?
We're done past that, but do you have anything to report?
I don't know if I can talk all this.
Aren't you glad you paid?
I don't know if I can stand all the excitement. I just, everything went well with the fourth, we had no incidents, other than the tenth of the night, we had an officer fire out at Rudy Rosa's, and poor Jason Myers, new officer, he's been deemed the black widow, I guess, because every time he's on duty, something happens. So, but we, we, relatively, nothing, nothing to report, I think we're doing everything well.
What did they use for restrooms down there, with the oysters lying down there? Did they have a restroom open there?
They bring porta-potties in.
Ah.
Yeah. Hey, Wayne, do you have anything for the city manager's report?
First of all, we met with, the mayor and I, with Jim Boomer, Jim Boomer, I met with the WCC, they are having their grand opening September seventeenth, there'll be some announcements coming forth. We are planning, we met, I met...
Hold on a minute, guys, can you just, one at a time, please?
I met Ten Lovely with the police association, and we're gonna have a meeting again scheduled shortly for the personal committee. Lastly, we're entering an agreement into, with a street lending agreement that I talked about, I thought, but I'm gonna ask at the next, next voting meeting, that the council retroactively, respectively, or prospectively, I mean, I'll prove it, it's a, an agreement that's gonna save us, it's for the streetlights on, I think it's just twenty of them, but it's gonna save us about twenty-seven hundred dollars a year on the LEDs.
My mayor's report, I just wanted to thank everyone from the fire department, the public works department, the police department, all the city employees, the Fourth of July celebration, it went, it was, as Johnny said, it was a great, great event, there were no major issues, these guys handled traffic like, you know, pros, so thank you very much for that, and it was great, it was a great celebration. Next one in line, I think, is the Banana Split Festival at the end of August, so...
We got Steedwood Fest coming up.
Oh, that's right, Steedwood Fest July thirty-first, yes, so...
And National Night Out.
And National Night Out is August...
Is the next, the Saturday afternoon.
That would be August first, I won't be here, crap, are we out of town? Okay, so, anything else for the good of the order? If not, meeting adjourned.